Okay, if we're ready, we'll call this meeting of the planning board to order. Would you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, we'll approve the agenda. Do we have any public comment, Arlie? Turn on your microphone.
Just the folks who are here for the rezoning request, I don't know if you want them to make public comment now or during the item.
Well, I think that's the only thing on the agenda, we'll just do it as part of the item, if that's all right. And that brings us up to our agenda tonight. And on the old business, we have rezoning requests of R-21-01 Anointed Word Church. And Daniel, would you like to bring us up to speed on that?
I would, but I think your clerk has something to offer.
Oh, okay.
We need to go back to the minutes of April 20.
Okay, do I hear, you have the minutes that were sent out to you. Do I hear motion to approve? There a second? All in favor?
That microphone.
That brings us up to the minute. Excuse me, the old business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick reminder, make sure you're using your microphones. We do have Heath Wiggins is on the line, so he can, he can hear you. So before you this evening, we have resounding request R-21-01. This is a request of Anointed Word International Church from Pastor Ellis, who is present this evening, to rezone a portion of its property from Mills River Residential MR-30 to General Business, which is MR-GB. Currently, the property is owned MR-30. Allowed in this district are things like single-family homes, incidental home occupations, churches. There is an attachment to your staff report Attachment B, which includes all of the allowable uses in the MR-30 district. The Mills River General Business District allows quite a bit more in terms of commercial uses. That's the intent of the, of the General Business District, and the full list of uses is included is Attachment C. And so that from a policy standpoint, there is a request, I believe, included, where there's a use proposed with this particular rezoning request. However, it's really important to remember that if a rezoning occurs, any use in that district is permissible. So I know that, I believe you guys have a end user in mind. So if, if that should happen to fall through or change your mind, then that any other use within the General Business District could be utilized on that property. So that's, that's a consideration with regards to rezonings in general. Other things to consider in this particular request are is spot zoning. Now, spot zoning is not illegal in North Carolina per se, but there needs to be, quote, "a reasonable basis" for that to occur. There is no definition of reasonable basis, but typically that would include, in general terms, it's a large enough area to be treated uniquely compared to with all its neighbors. And there is Mills River General Business near the site, but all of the surrounding properties are either residential or neighborhood commercial, which is a transitional zone between commercial and residential. This proposal is inconsistent with the existing land use plan that was adopted in 2005, as well as the forthcoming land use plan for the Making Mills River 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And so based on the policy documents that the town has adopted, staff recommends denying this request as it's been presented. The planning board's role in this particular instance is to make a recommendation to town council. As with, as is normal for most planning board decisions, this is an advisory role. So town council will take whichever direction is provided to them from this board under advisement when they're making their own decision. So the options are recommending approval of the request as it's been presented. You can recommend approval, but restricting the area in terms of its actual land area could be reduced. You could table this for additional 45 days for consideration. Beyond that, if there's no action taken, it's assumed a favorable recommendation is provided to council, or you could recommend denial of the, of the request as it's been presented. Then the last thing on the list is, in addition to making your motion this evening, however, however you choose to go with that, there's a statement of consistency that needs to be presented as well to town council, that this board has to adopt. And so there is one drafted in your packet that's very bare bones and basically states the facts that it's inconsistent with the plans I mentioned. That can be modified, however the board would like to modify it. The last two pieces of your packet list the property as it's currently zoned, and then the very last page shows it, the proposal to go from to MR-30 to General Business. That's all I have as far as a background from a staff report point of view. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, I think you probably covered. My first question was the spot zoning thing. Are we going to get into a problem of spot zoning? I know the state at times don't look kindly on spot zoning.
Yeah, there typically has to be a pretty compelling argument, from what I've seen, to make a spot zoning decision. Again, it's not illegal in and of itself, it just needs to be clear justification as to why a property on its own is being treated differently than everything else in the neighborhood.
Okay, and I do remember that in the past, we've rezoned a piece of property for a specific purpose, and I assume these gentlemen here will tell us again what they want to do with the property. But we rezoned it and that fell through, so that really opened it up for a lot, is what, what would be covered under the news on it. Anybody want to comment? I know you do. If you do, come to the microphone over there, and probably would help if you just drop your mask down, it muffles you sometime.
On the bottom, is it red?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pastor of Anointed Word Church, and I just want to say we love Mills River, and we love the community, and we enjoy living here, and we have lived here for 18 years. And we do appreciate the way that it's being managed and developed wisely. But we, looking at what all is around us, the school is behind the piece of property that we want to rezone in order to sell it to Atlantic Power Systems. It's just down, just within walking distance is Reese Trailer Sales. Within walk, just a short walking distance is Pepsi, and also is the new Amazon that went in, and FedEx, just to mention a few of the businesses that are close by. I remember a number of years back that I attended a planning meeting and, in which the the daycare was approved as commercial. And I don't remember exactly the year of that, but I think it was probably around 2005 or '06. And so that piece of property is just two doors down from where this piece of property is that we want to see rezoned. So with the location being very close to all these other commercial businesses, and the fact that right now this land is tax exempt because it's, belongs to the church, it would be, bring in tax revenue for the town of Mills River and for Henderson County. And I believe the traffic impact on this would be minimal, it wouldn't be like Amazon or Pepsi that has a lot of trucks coming and going. And I think, if I remember correctly, Joel said there would be about 10 people that would be employed there, and I think they would be good jobs. And he seems to me like he'd be the kind of guy that'd be a really good employer. So I believe it'd be a benefit to our community, and I think it, I don't think it would be a detriment at all to the other people living nearby. We own the property of the, at 2193, my wife and I personally own that house, and we have no objection to it. I did talk to Mr. Marlowe across the road, and he told me he would have no objection to, to this business being there. And we don't want to put a business in, or we don't want to see a business go in that would be objectionable to anyone. Sorry about that. In our community. But, because you know, we're trying to minister to people in our community and be friendly and be a good neighbor. But I don't believe that this would be detrimental, and the people in our church, some of which live in Mills River, they're in favor of it, of course, so. That's about all I have to say, all the utilities are there, and I think it'd be a good site for Joel. Would you like to say something?
Well, the way that we, we stumbled, actually stumbled onto the property, because we were looking around Mills River and looking for a site to put a warehouse in office. And we had drove by Prime, which was there, and Volvo, and all of them that are out there. Pepsi, FedEx, which we pick up our deliveries for. We looked and we said, you know what, that would, it's a little smaller than the piece that we were looking for, but we thought we could make it work. And especially when Daryl had said that he could give us an extra acre there, which I believe brought it to a little over two acres. And we actually, I was actually wanting to build a, a really large facility there. But we liked the area so good, we thought that we would just make it fit and just make it a little smaller. And then, so that's, so we just thought it was a perfect location because we fly in and out a lot. Because myself and engineers that work for me, we fly all over the United States. And we do projects all over the United States. We're consultants. And that's what we do in that office. The reason that we need a warehouse space is because we've, we're also dealers for Kohler Power Generation Equipment and Cummins Power Generation Equipment. And, and also we're an OEM, which means Original Equipment Manufacturer, or Snyder Electric, which is one of the largest in the, in the world. And what Snyder manufactures for my company is lightning inserted suppression equipment. And really, in dollar value, we do more in our lightning protection area than, than we do in power generation. So we do millions and millions of dollars a year in that product. Now, as far as Daryl's correct, we don't take many deliveries. Now, on the back of the, and what, the picture that you see there is actually a picture that was in Brevard, because we've worked a lot with Transylvania County, their 911s, emergency services, because we do all the backup power for them. And actually, that building right there was built by Transylvania County, and it's 60,000 square feet. And we were considering leasing 30,000 square foot of that building, because another 30,000 had already been leased. That's how we came up with that, because I said, you know, that's, that's really what I'd like for our building to look like. But we were making some, we were going to make some changes, and the changes are for the, are for the betterment of the community. When you look at that, you can see there's parking lots in the front of the building, there's a large parking lot. And then around the back of that building, there's a large lot to where tractor trailers can back up to the, to the doors in the back. Well, what I decided to do was I said, you know, we don't need any parking in the front. Let's just take the entire front, I think we got a 60-foot setback, if I'm correct about that, believe I am. We got a 60-foot setback, and that setback, I said, let's just landscape the entire 60-foot setback. Since we have a large area around the back employee part, and the employees can park around the back, we'll make a spot for them there, and we'll still have room, of course, to, to bring the tractor trailers and a bucket to the doors. Now, on the tractor trailers, when I'm talking about that, be very honest. If we have more than three or four tractor trailer deliveries in the period of a week, I can't even imagine there'd be that many, because what happens is, we order power generation equipment by the truckload, and those truckloads will come out, they unload into our warehouse, and then we sell out of our warehouse and deliver, but a lot of the product actually ships from the factory. That way, we don't have to warehouse it. Same with our lightning protection inserted suppression equipment, it's, it's the same way. So it'd be very little movement out of there, and I think that by doing that with a property, I think it would look it'll be a beautiful site. I guess you could put maybe some houses out, out there on the property. But in my honest opinion, I think that this building would look nicer and, and fit the neighborhood better. So aesthetically, I don't think you'll find a more beautiful building, and I'll spend whatever it takes to make it that way. And like we'd mentioned, I estimate about 10 employees being there. And we do also a lot of other business around Mills River, portable welding in different locations. And we give them a lot of business, they actually manufacture some, some junction boxes, a lot of stainless product for us. And then that's the same way with other businesses in the area. I explained, made some notes here, because my memory's not what it used to be. So what'll happen in the office, there'll be people in there that's tracking deliveries. We have a website that's about to launch, and we'll have website developers in there, marketing folks in there. And because we ship across US, freight freeze on everything that we do, including Alaska and Hawaii. I think it would be good revenue for, for the town and for the county. And also, I'd like to say, we've worked this area, I've worked between, we've lived in Highlands for, um, 30 years. I have four children, they all went to school in Highlands, graduated from Highlands. And then, of course, they all went off to colleges. My oldest daughter actually got a poli sci degree in North Carolina, UNC. And, and her husband is, is my service manager. Still in Highlands, still runs services out of Highlands. And then my oldest son, he graduated law school, and he came to work for me last year, because I, I need him. And nowadays, he can make a lot more money working for dad than he can be in an attorney. And he's a great attorney, because he'll argue with everything you tell him. And then my, then my youngest daughter, she holds a master's degree as a teacher, and has a teaching degree in cashers. My youngest son, he's the only one that's not real close to us, but he's in, he's in Virginia. And he's a aircraft mechanic, so he got an AEP degree, and now he's back in college for his aeronautical engineering degree. I've donated tens of thousands of dollars for youth sports. Tens of thousands of dollars have been donated to Brevard High School. Youth softball. I bought gear for all the kids. I've donated tens of thousands of dollars to humane societies. We tried to set it about $20,000 a year for donations. And all that money that's, all those donations has been generated by my company. We do good, honest business. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
One question, this is not an actual artist drawing of what you proposed. This is a building, existing building in Brevard, you said. And you mentioned something about you were going to use part of the building and lease the rest?
There's really no, as it is right now, there's no plans of leasing any portion of the building. What it is, is we'll build offices. I'm hoping, I don't know how large the building that I can get on the property with the setbacks, with the size of the property. We're hoping to have 2,000 to 3,000 square foot of offices inside the building. But as it is, I really don't plan on leasing any of it, because I think we need the entire building for what we do.
Does any of the board members, anybody else have any questions for this gentleman?
I have a question, but not, not for the, for the possible purchaser. I still have some questions. Specifically, I drove by the property today, and I, I didn't see, and maybe I just didn't slow down enough, but I didn't see the rezoning sign out there. Has, has there been one?
It's, excuse me, it has not been posted yet. The hearing's on the 27th, so we were waiting till we got, within our 25-day window to post it. It just hasn't, it'll be posted this week.
Okay, because my question was, you know, also the adjacent property owners, have we, have they been notified and have we heard from them? I'd just like to know what they're.
Not as of yet, no. The advertisement requirements relate to the public hearing for town council. So those will go out, the letters will go out probably early next week.
Okay. So we don't, we know, of course, what the Ellis's desires are for this, but the folks on the other side of the property, we, we don't have any opinions from them yet.
That's correct, we've not heard from anyone.
Anyone else have a, any question?
I guess I have more of a, a comment related to this, because I, I see the staff recommendation, and I understand the spot zoning thing, but, and I, I believe I brought this up during our, our strategic plan things. Butler Bridge is, aside from 280 and 191, Butler Bridge is the only through major thoroughfare that Mills River has. There's already major business along that road. You have the school right there, you have airflow that's right across the street from the school. If you go out fanning bridges or fanning fields there, you've got all the industrial that's out there. And then right up at the corner of 280 and Butler Bridge, you have the Reese, and you have the Dog Care Center that's there on the corner as well. This property backs up against mostly the school property there. So I just, my comment is, this is, this is the perfect location for this kind of business with the area we have available for traffic in, in Mills River. And I think the, the spot zoning thing gets overridden by the proximity to the other things. So I just wanted to comment on that and let everybody keep that in mind when we're, we're considering this, because sometimes we put things out there like that, and it kind of becomes a hurdle that we can't seem to get ourselves around. But in this case, I think it's a justified option.
Any other comments? Do I hear the motion as to move with this?
Sorry, I'm still, still thinking about some questions and some things that, you know, I would be curious about. If, if this were to be rezoned, and this use were to, you know, after, after, you know, years, not be there anymore, would there be the possibility of a much larger use that would then be there by right? I mean, as, and if so, would that be a use by right versus having to come in for, for a look, like for traffic purposes? Because right now, I agree, it, it sounds like the traffic impact is not going to be that much, Butler Bridge is, you know, it's, it's not, I don't believe Butler Bridge is over capacity, I haven't analyzed it, but you know, or do we need to think about the future uses as well as the most likely next use, I guess what I'm trying to say? Are we given a pretty, you know, from our charter as a planning board, are we given a pretty narrow? It either meets the vision or it doesn't. Not whether it's a good use or a bad use. I mean, are we, are we pretty well focused in on what we're able to, to look at? I mean, certainly, I, I don't see any reason that that would be a bad thing. A, a bad use is just, is it in the right context? And is that what we're, we're to determine, if it's in the right context based on the zoning? And it's been zoned for, since Mills River's been Mills River, I would think. So I'm, I'm just asking those questions, I guess they're, they're more rhetorical or our guidance. What, what is our guidance? What is our charter as a planning board here? Are we to say, yeah, that looks like a really good use? Or it's a use that doesn't fit the comprehensive plan, therefore we make our decisions based on that?
So there's a couple of things to consider. To your first point about the use, yes, if this use is established, say in the next year to 18 months, however long it would take to get it up and running, and then five or 10, 20 years down the road, if, if all the things being equal, the same zoning and all that, if, if the property is sold, it can change, it can operate by right as any one of the 56 or so uses allowed by right in the General Business District. So that's, that's why I said at the beginning, I understand we have a proposal in front of us, and, and no one is speaking negatively of that. Seems like, you know, logical use for all intents and purposes. But from my point of view, as the, as the town's planner, and looking at this, and looking at this in the context of the future, I don't look at the proposed use before us right now, I look at the zoning district. And the zoning district as it stands is residential, which allows for a fairly limited variety of uses, because it's intended to be a quiet neighborhood. The General Business District, on the other hand, is, is much more open to commercial retail warehousing operations, much more akin to what you find at the intersection, or what you just have in, in sort of the main intersection down here at CVS and the storage, storage facility. So as a planning board, your job is to interpret the plans and the intent of the districts, and make a and make a recommendation accordingly. Um, and you, you do have to put in writing a statement of consistency. That says whether or not these, this change is consistent with any adopted plans of the town. Uh, and so as this, as this statement is written now, it is written, uh, that it is inconsistent with the adopted plan, because when the plan was adopted in two thousand and five, this property in particular was, was listed as low density residential. And while the, the current comprehensive plan, other consideration is not officially adopted yet, it also identifies this property as, as residential, but of a mixed use variety, or excuse me, mixed residential, which would allow for some commercial operations, but, but limited is the intent. It's not, again, it's not, um, it's a zoning regulation. Uh, so again, uh, from a, from the planning board's point of view, your job is to interpret policies of the town and decide whether or not they fit this particular district. And then also acknowledge its consistency or inconsistency with the plan. Make a decision accordingly. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, sir, it does. And there's no other mechanism to allow a use like this other than a rezoning.
As it stands currently, that is correct. There, there is a process authorized by state statute. That the town, town has not adopted, but it's what's called a conditional rezoning, which allows someone to request a rezoning of a piece of land, using this land, for example. Um, you know, there are some things in the general business district, I think most people would agree, would not be a great fit for that area. So that the applicant could say, I want to rezone to general business, but I only want to be able to use these ten or fifteen different uses, not all fifty-six of the uses prepared or listed. That way it gives the boards and the council and the community a little bit more, uh, sense of comfort, knowing that anything that's allowed per the conditional district, um, would fit. We don't, the town has not had that authority right now. We just simply haven't adopted that as part of our code. But that would be the only other mechanism that would allow something like this with, without a traditional rezoning.
So, and there's no way to say this, a conditional use for this particular use could be allowed here? And then when it goes away, it would revert back to the previous zoning. We don't, we don't have anything like that.
That's correct.
So what we've got to do is look at the future for that piece of property. From now on, and would that meet with the land use plan, yes or no? Pretty much not what we interpret. It either does or it doesn't. To an extent, I mean, I guess we have to interpret, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a gray line there, because the, the map, the map is black or white. It, it either is consistent or is inconsistent with the map. But the other thing that, that this board in particular has to consider is, is the growth of the town. Um, and yes, the, the adopted plans and the forthcoming plan recognize this as residential. But that's not written in the law. I mean, the, the board can recommend something that's not consistent with it. Although that, that plan hasn't been reviewed so recently, it would make sense to, you know, to align with what it recommends, because that's been vetted recently by the committee, the community and the committees and this board recently.
But from a recommendation standpoint, we could recommend that it be rezoned with the statement that it does not meet the plan.
That's right. Yeah, it, the fact that it is inconsistent with the plan doesn't prohibit the rezoning from happening. It's just a public acknowledgement that the plan that the town had adopted on such and such date, the rezoning is inconsistent with that plan, which does have the effect of modifying the future land use plan to reflect whatever the rezoning is.
Once it's rezoned, the new plan will show that.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I haven't been on the planning board long, but this is the first time that that I can remember that the planning board has not been able to hear from neighboring properties. And why is this? Cheryl, am I wrong in that aspect or?
Well, apparently our, the way our procedure is written, it's the town council that gets the benefit of that opinion from adjoining neighbors, not, not the planning board, if I understand Daniel correctly.
The statutes regarding, the, the state law regarding public notification requirements for public hearings dictate that before the elected body conducts a public hearing, certain requirement, uh, notice requirements have to be completed. And those are things like the property posting, the letters to the neighbors, newspaper ad. All that has to be completed prior to the public hearing. If, if this meeting, if this particular case had been heard at your next meeting in, in the month of May, those advertisements would have, would have gone out already. Uh, but in this instance, we were trying to get them back to the board as quickly as possible, so they could get a recommendation and move on.
Okay, did I understand you that, that this planning board has the right to table this until we can get this information?
That's right. The, the board can, can table it for up to forty-five days.
After hearing everything, uh, you know, what the gentleman had to say, I think it would be, uh, a good business to have in Mills River. But I'm like Wayne and everybody else seems to have a, uh, bit of a concern. I, I would entertain a motion that we do table it till we get more in compliance with, or not necessarily in compliance, but more information. Now, I would, uh, I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion that we table this issue because of not knowing concerns of the neighbor.
I didn't understand you, Wayne.
I say, I won't make a motion that we table this issue, because we haven't heard the concerns of the neighboring parcels.
I need to withdraw mine then, right?
By saying that you, we'll, you would entertain a motion, you're asking someone else to make that motion. Yeah. No, you're fine.
All right. I have a motion that we postpone it, is that right, until we hear from the neighbors? And that will give us up to forty-five days, is that right? You fetch the motion, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh.
Okay, so we, we should, we table it.
So just, while we have everyone in the room, um, the, the notifications will go out uh, next week at the latest, which means that your next meeting, the eighteenth. Oh, yes, thank you. That's a good point. So, um, the eight, uh, May eighteenth, the conditional use permit for twenty-six Cook Lane is scheduled to be heard, uh, which is typically your second meeting date of the month. The public hearing for this case is scheduled for May twenty-seventh. So in the interest of getting the public notified and, and these folks on schedule, it would be great if we could consider a special meeting later that week, maybe May twentieth. Would that work for everyone? I guess we'll, would it be a special meeting or post? Okay, so we'll just call a special meeting then. Does that make sense to everyone? There's, your regularly scheduled meeting is May eighteenth, but the Board of Adjustment case, which has been, uh, remanded back to the town, uh, from court, the eighteenth is, as soon as we can get all parties back together, which just so happened that it's the same day. Yep. So if, if that's okay with the board.
So are we saying instead of meeting on the eighteenth, we're going to meet on the twentieth?
Yes.
Fine with me.
Okay.
And everybody?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Can can we put it in the form of, of a motion, please? Could we put that in a form of a motion, please?
Make a motion that we move the meeting of the eighteenth to the twentieth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. Does that work?
So we have no, uh, new business. Daniel, do we have, you have any additional items for us?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, for updates. We got, you noticed today that the bicycle and pedestrian planning grant project, uh, is slated to begin in the next two weeks, which is exciting. Uh, we were awarded that funding in January, but it's taken, uh, the state a couple of months to get it stuck in a row. But all that paperwork's been signed, executed, so we're ready to go on that one, which is really exciting. You might have seen the charging stations are installed and they've been used. I think it's a pretty decent use. We've had, I think, thirty, thirty-seven or thirty-eight charges over the last three weeks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go for it. Yeah.
Uh, and then we have, uh, the, uh, the comprehensive plan is scheduled to be presented to the town council next Thursday, uh, as well as the budget. And the, the biggest news I'm excited about is Michael Malachek will be joining the town next week as the zoning administrator for the town. Uh, he comes to us from the Triangle area and, uh, we are thrilled to have him joining us soon. So Mike, if you're still on the call, we're looking forward to it.
Thanks, Daniel.
That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else have any other comments?
One other quick question. The, we tabled this, you're going to tell the neighbors, what are the chances that we'll hear from the school?
Well, that's a good question. Um, I can reach out to them specifically to make sure, because last time we sent letters, it didn't make it to the school till long after the hearing was, was already held. So I'll just reach out to the principal directly and make sure that they're aware of it.
And I just want to tell everybody that your, your volunteer, um, gift bags are appreciation. Bags are on your chairs with all kinds of little goodies for you. And we appreciate you very much and we thank you for all the time that you spend.
You all hear a motion, we adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Good journey.